All right, I'd like to call the Village of Webster Workshop in order, March 2nd, 2021. And this evening on our agenda, we have basically, I guess, two things, three things. The first is a order of business. It is a resolution to increase the compensation for the zoning board of appeal members from $105, $105 per quarter to $160 per quarter for the chairman and from $82 per quarter to $112 per quarter for all of the members retroactive to January 1st when the two boards combine together. So. So again, maybe I should read that resolution? Did you hear it?
Yes, yeah, I've heard it, but it's supposed to be December, I apologize.
What?
It's supposed to be December, not January, I apologize.
Oh, through December?
Yes.
December 1, 2012. Oh, 2012, excuse me. That's because they have combined the two. It is not a total of twice as much, but it's probably four or anything. So if there's no objection, I'm going to take that motion.
I'll make that a motion.
I thought that was great, yeah.
I was thinking we should do that.
trustee Alito?
Aye.
trustee Lancy?
Aye.
trustee Flower?
Aye.
Mayor Byer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
I know this one's rather less helpful than the state那边的work cut out here and doing the double duty with the two, especially with the. Which I think is a lot of issues.
Yeah.
But I think it's a lot better than the previous one that we approved.
At any rate, moving on to the second item, that is a discussion on the budget. And I guess I would just turn this over to you. If you would like to explain and talk about whichever one you want to do first.
This is very REIT friendly, so I think.
Yes, I do, I did, I said, oh my goodness, thank you.
I second that.
Let's start with sewer, shall we? For these, am I moving the mic and everything?
What did you say?
What, huh?
Do I need to move the mic?
I think we can hear.
Okay, all right then. Okay, so for sewer purposes, I created three revenue projections based on $150 per EBU, which is what we're currently charging, and then for $190 and for $200. And then at the bottom, at the end of the last page, you can see with, if we adopt the budget as it stands, what the revenues and what compared to revenues and expenditures, what we're looking at dollar wise. For example, if we go with $190 per EBU, our revenues will exceed expenditures by 47,000 plus. Does that make sense? Okay. Let's see, the other thing I wanted to note about the sewer, there is a line item 813457, preventative tank maintenance. We've got $100,000 on that line, which we will only need to spend if we do not go regional. So.
What page, what page did you want?
It's on the last page of the sewer.
Third of the way down.
Yeah. Preventative tank.
Okay, okay.
Yep. So Jake, do you want to speak to that a little bit?
No, it was one of the recommendations from the engineer in the study. That was part of our, if it's a village only project, this is one of the pieces of that that has been a number of years, obviously, since we've discussed it.
That's something that we.
Is it better?
Sorry, no, that's something that we will not need if we go regional, we wouldn't use it. So it might be wise to just take it off this budget. John said that it should, they should get replaced this year, but we can push it to next year. And if we're still our own independent unit, then we would have to book it in for next year.
Next year.
Now, wasn't that planned for the projected bonding that we were going to do for the whole thing? So that really wouldn't be part of our next year's budget, per se, that would be part of the bond, right?
Yeah, that would be part of the annual debt service for that entire project.
Yeah. So if we take that off the table.
Right.
Then the revenues in excess of expenditures, you could add $100,000 to that, or $97,000. Okay, those were the only specific points that I wanted to make about the sewer. Does anybody have, does anything sticking out that you want to talk about?
Jake does.
Well, I know the compostage, and I'm sorry, I was looking at other stuff, I don't know if they were exposed to the compostage difference, just suddenly gotten all the different.
Oh, right. That is our estimated share of the generator for the town plant.
Where is that?
Page.
87, that's like 813457?
Yep, top of the third page.
Oh, okay.
And that's the repair for?
That's our share of the new generator for the town plant.
And did we get, did we end up getting the itemized cost, not just blanketed? I know I.
I haven't seen anything yet.
So my response to the email was, or it was our meeting, I said, we didn't itemize breakdown. So you haven't seen anything yet?
No.
So where does that 87 come from?
Well, the 17 is pulled from prior years. And the 70, honestly, I took from Jake's ballpark in his response to Don's email.
Okay, so this is just what Jake's anticipating?
I'm gonna have to be right. So, today we have a special, and Don and Charlie will be together to sort out where things were.
Because that one you need to agree to, make sure that numbers are collected with the same amount, right? Okay.
Still up in the air.
So to wax it up, some more concrete number, and just put in the best guess we had.
All right, so if it's less, it's great, if it's more, change that number again online.
Yeah. Yep.
And this also includes projected lease figures for a VACCON truck that we'd need.
Yes.
Either way, and then if the, it'd be the 8120, or is it 813200?
It is.
813200.
Yes.
So what's the treatment they put?
Yep. And that's, John is gonna get some lease quotes for me, but I just, for this estimate, I just took the total and split it out into four, four annual payments, added, I forget what, percent interest, but I based it, I think, on what we paid for the loader, that interest?
What type of equipment is this?
It's a VACCON truck.
Oh, yes, yes.
It's a VACCON truck that we got our money toward that other month or so. 813200, I think that.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Last place.
Do, but that's okay, we can, kind of wait.
What is it, like a 10-year lease?
No, it was about a four, you figured out four payments, did two, is that right?
I basically took on four, but I really, I don't know. Hopefully, by the time we have the next workshop, I'll have quotes from John.
Okay, and this isn't your, one of those lease-to-buy things, right? Is it just lease?
It is.
It's a lease purchase, yeah, we own it like it's a dollar payment at the end.
Okay.
It's this municipal lease, what they call it, but I don't know why they call it that, because we can't truly, you know, get it far along, but we can lease something, I don't know, if you have.
And the life of these is pretty long anyways, right, if you take care of it?
Well, one we have now is 18 years old.
That's insane.
And the life, I guess the life's about 16 years.
Yeah.
15 or 16, and they've got the.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And there really, there isn't a lot, I'm glad that we, I mean, assuming we raise these sewer rates, I'm glad that we're coming out ahead of expenditures, because there's no wiggle room really at all. We need what we need.
And is that, in our sewer rate, are we anticipating, you know, collections amount? Is that part of this? Or no?
The collection system's included within this. If we had collection only, if it was regionally collection only, it would be split out, I think we started doing some calculations, but we don't, even if, you know, we went regional, we wouldn't be going on this budget anyway.
Right, true, very true.
Exactly.
And this will be estimated about 75, I think, 75 or 78.
Yeah.
Per EBU.
Yeah.
If it was just collection only, plus whatever the town costs are, I think those are projected like 2 and 1/4, so, or at least it's 2 and 1/4 to 2.50, so.
If we, because I look at the sludge too, is there any chance that if we stay on our own, that we can get back to anything that we had before and reduce some of these costs?
Well, we've been looking at alternatives for sludge disposal, because it's, you know, frankly, we just, it hauls through a landfill and takes up landfill space and is not put through a big move.
But what can we do instead of doing that?
When we talked about alternate locations?
Yeah, yeah.
Locations, but what can we do? Is there something that we can compost, we can do something different?
It's up to you guys and the attorney, I think it's.
Yeah, I don't think, right now, we don't have to revisit what we did, but if it's at a different location, I think you could do.
Well, that's kind, that's kind of what I'm.
But then it's evaluating, you know, the value of that, hey, we're not composting, we don't have, you know, $60,000 in disposal cost, but we have, you know, $40,000 in trucking cost or something to get it to another location, or whatever it might be, you know?
Has to be well worth it.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, it's.
Well, that's kind of what I'm trying to get at.
There's a lot of things wrapped up in it, you know, we can buy fox oil now that we never had to buy before, the sludge disposal cost, but, you know, we don't have maintenance on the wildcat turner that we had before, we.
Right.
But that didn't take a whole lot, you know, once it was.
Yeah, but everything adds up, and that's kind of what I, that's why I was trying to figure this out, is that it, does it move us to try to go back to what we used to do?
Then it would have its own cost and considerations, I think, as well, so it's, that's a, it's above my pay grade question. Off the way.
Not above your money, no, so don't go there.
Okay. Anything else noteworthy here? Many of these are just pretty much the same year over year.
Yep.
We were doing bonds?
I just wanted to bring up the sewer debt again.
Uh huh.
We talked about the finance people, about forgiving that debt, does anybody hear anything about that?
Yes, we're going to do that. Now that the budget is managed, I can go back to trying to come up with a reasonable estimate of what sewer should have taken with it when it's split up in terms of fund balance. And then we apply that to the debt and forgive the balance. But we, we've been assured that we're totally legally in the clear to write it off.
And Don's agreed to that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I got when, when we had that discussion.
That's so important.
That it sounded like that's what we could do.
Yeah, I can't wait to make that go away.
Oh, please.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right, are we moving on?
Moving on.
Shall we look at revenues next? Oh, before we hit revenues, I would like to point out, the budgeted expenditures as they stand today are less than budgeted this year. So, yay us. However, budgeted revenues are more or less, so we still have a gap to fill.
Okay.
And I would like to take a few minutes to talk about, there are three major reasons why revenues are expected to be down. Let's see. One is the sales tax.
You guys knew that?
Yep, I have a little more information about it, and I spent a bunch of time coming up with my best estimate, so I think this 1.4 million is about as good as we're gonna get. It was reduced slightly, just, it's an item of interest, by the distressed provider assistance account, have any of you, are you familiar?
No.
The state budget includes provision that county and sales tax revenues from statewide are to be withheld to put in this distressed provider assistance account to support financially distressed hospitals and nursing homes. And these withholdings affected the distribution that we just received a couple weeks ago, and they're gonna hit the next four distributions. So all four that hit our, our share. It's not a big amount, it's only maybe under $10,000, I would say.
They've stopped them a lot.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, so there's one. The next one is gross utility tax. This is kind of a, I'm, I'm having to smooth this out. One of our major payers, EBS, they're an energy provider, and they have usually paid us about $35,000 a year. We have not gotten a payment from them since last May, usually they take quarterly, so I'm trying, I'm not sure where to look, but if they're not paying it, somebody else probably should be. But until I figure it out, I'm hesitant to put that revenue in the budget.
Done after.
Is that, is that an account number here that I can?
Yep, that is AA, that's 1130.
Ah, good, okay.
You said EBS? I remember it wrong, pardon?
Yeah. If you Google EBS, it comes up, it's some power company in Great Britain. But I dug a little more and I found the right place, and I have reached out to them, but I haven't heard back, not surprisingly. Okay, so that's about another $35, I think. And then the other piece is the ready grant that we got last year for $215,000, that's not happening, that project is over, and that grant just went away.
Okay, where is that? Just give me numbers and I can see where I can.
Grant is 3089200.
Ah, good, okay. See you.
One number for this year, how long are we still?
Say that again?
The one number we're looking at right now, is the sandbar wells is still there? Or we receive, or will receive.
Well, yes, unless they have to withhold it for parishite homes, or coffee shops, or something else, yes.
That's still there.
Haven't heard anything of that.
Is that CDC? So where does the wells, where does that fall, maybe I don't even have it on here.
What's the?
Is that the grant for wells that Daryl's talking about, is that CDC money?
Oh, the ready grant?
Do we have a ready grant for the wells?
No, that was for the, that was for the.
Right, okay.
For the sandbar wells. Yeah, that's the.
Okay.
That's that one, that's the 216, but it, you know, 2100 gallons, well, so it's 1100.
Right, right.
6000.
So I'm not missing any grant. Tell me I'm missing some grant money.
Okay.
Anything else anyone want? Oh, property taxes, the first line. Daryl had asked me about how much we can increase it, so I can educate you guys a little bit about that. There are two factors, two limiting factors, the tax cap and the constitutional tax limit. The constitutional tax limit, that limits the, like, the overall tax, for example, I can't remember what the percentage is, but for example, it might say that we, under no circumstances, can charge more than 10% of assessed values. And then the tax cap limits how much we raise the tax in any given year over the prior year. The tax cap is 2%, but it can be overridden by vote of 60%, 60% or more of the board. So the number that I have on the spreadsheet represents a 2% increase.
2% increase on property taxes?
Yeah.
2.2 cents.
213.
What does it say for thousand right now?
2 cents per thousand.
213.
213.
Yeah.
And this represents what, change to 215?
No, 2% increase.
Oh, no. Exact $2.13, this would represent 2%, but I'm saying, what would that work out to?
217, right?
217?
I think so, yeah. I did the math on the dollar total, not on the percentage.
I think the only bad answer is 215.
Well.
And you are 2%. Let's see, no, we're not.
It's not bad.
No.
It's like an 12, it's more, it's less than 100.
I mean, if you look at any of the other pictures in towns around, there's some type of that. Unbelievable.
It's an overall. If we do the 2% increase. That's an overall increase in the tax levy of about $10,700. So it's still, it's relatively tiny, yeah.
Tiny compared to what we're.
Yeah, right.
Thinking that on here.
Right.
Access value, the total access value, we have 2157.
Oh, and Daryl, when we met last week, you could also ask if property values, if the assessed values had decreased, and in fact, they have.
The assessed value decreased?
Yep. Okay. Any further revenue questions?
Is a decrease in total size value because of the equalization rate basis?
I don't know.
Because we haven't had assessment in a long time, or we haven't had full assessment in a while, I don't know what the equalization rate is.
I don't know.
Was anything, like, yeah, kind of?
Well, we did have those couple properties that were demolished, the 104 is main, and then one on purchase. Where's the other one?
107 purchase, no, like, main, yeah.
So now they're assessed for vacant, vacant land instead of whatever the house was at.
I'm trying to figure it out. Yeah, all the reliefs like that.
Yeah.
I think it's jazzercise, but. Carol, that makes sense, yeah. But was it jazzercise?
I don't think that's.
No, it's way watch. Way watches is basically coming apart.
Say what?
They're under reorganization. Not, not materially, but they're trying to change the whole concept. Although they, they really would welcome a meeting up right here.
Well, it is $180,000 to rent the room.
Thank you.
Sure.
Well, we'll have to consider what happens in March, or at the end of March and April, when some of the restrictions are lifted, they have 50%.
Like you're positive, thinking, you know something we don't know?
Well, yeah, I think.
I don't know.
So it's projected, some of the things are gonna be lifted.
I don't believe what I hear, so.
I don't know, they are in 20s. I know. Well, that would be a college run, we're gathering, but it's accurate. Next year, so.
Yep.
It is a year away, about half a year, through the next year, so I'll see.
All right, so really, our goals are really gonna be looking really hard through the expenditures and see where we can bank adjustments, because the revenues aren't gonna change much.
Yeah.
And we gotta make up some cash. Maybe some donation of mayor's salary and village clerk's salary.
If you take, if you took 10% off of everything under expenditures.
Oh, which is that easy to say 10%?
Just cut everything by 10%.
Right.
Or 2%.
Right. So you're basically telling staff over there, there's no raises?
No raises. No raises for us.
Oh, that's like, that's like 0.1, so that's.
Why don't you just cut 2% off everything in the expenditures?
Now Carl.
So you can tell Carl?
Oh.
Not really.
Look, we could tell our PD we're cutting 2%.
Yeah, select.
And our fuel.
Carl, if it was that easy, I would love it.
I just did, it worked out great.
Oh, Heather and Joe reminded me that we lowered taxes in 2015, so even if they go back to that, we're still, we essentially haven't raised taxes in 15 years yet.
Well, in theory, but to the population, that won't be the case. I mean, if something's going up, you're raising it, they're not gonna remember that in 2015.
We can remind them.
Yeah, you can remind them, it's still.
Because if you.
Unfortunately, your pocketbook changes, you raised it, that's.
I know, but all they have to do is look around at the towns and the villages that are around them, compared to the taxes that they pay, compared to.
And no argument there, just remember, it is a small amount of money.
But you still have to tell them that, because they're not gonna look it up.
Right, and that only equates to 10 grand, we've still got a lot more to figure out.
Oh, yeah.
And it's, it's a small amount of money, but it's a good idea to, to raise it once in a while, just so things like the tax cap don't come back to bite you later.
Exactly.
Is there, is there any?
Is there, is there any planned expenditures from the reserve account, or is that what's actually going in there?
It's not, I didn't print it out, but I wanted to.
Okay, so that's not included neither on the.
Are we, are we ready to move on to expenditures?
Uh huh.
Okay. The first thing I would like to point out is that we have a, uh, what's it called? A vehicle and equipment reserve. So we have a hundred and nine thousand dollars in proposed vehicle and equipment purchases that we can offset. And if we did that, we would still have about sixty-five thousand in that reserve. If we do that, then we are only looking at a potential deficit of seventy, just sort of seventy-two thousand, instead of a hundred and eighty.
Mr. Schwinnly agree to this?
Absolutely. No, that's why we, we started this as our equipment reserve.
Yeah.
Um, you know, and it's funny, the sales of equipment here, we've got fifty-eight, in the revenue side, fifty-eight thousand dollars. Um, that's, right now, we have vehicles planned to be replaced this year as part of that vapor rotation policy we started in fifteen or fourteen, maybe. Um, obviously, we held off from, you know, due to COVID stuff and the unknown. If we keep it close to the end of the year, we can say, okay, now, yes, we're going to have enough money, sales tax payment, or this or that, or we under spend over here. So we can still get those and keep, we want to keep the stagger if we can. If we replace those two out of this year's budget, then this budget reflects the next two, plus, um. Well, it was Will's truck, you know, we were talking about. Equidax becoming a code enforcement truck, and then having a new fly car, if you will, or, you know, general office vehicle for people to take into, um. Uh, you know, run into the bank, or run into this, that, or run into conferences, um. And Clancy, how he ran his, if I didn't say, he's absolutely pushing pretty hard for an electric or hybrid vehicle that we, you know, first eighty miles. That really makes a lot of sense for that type of vehicle.
Yeah.
Local driving around, it's, it's, you know, there's no cost, there's no, there's no fuel cost, everything.
Exactly.
So you save on whatever that vehicle is, um, and then it only goes to gas after beyond eighty miles, so. Um, that's a, it's pretty good, uh, pretty good look at something there, too, so. Um, but that's the case, you know, right now, we have revenues just for what's going to be in this budget. And the reality is, our, our, you know, we're not going to be able to sell the vehicles before the end of this budget year, the ones that we're trying to replace this year. So that would go up, but that, and, and we also take the revenues that we projected for this year down a little bit. So it's just a, just a balance to have to see if we can get all that, but we're trying to hold up as long as possible, so we have figures for sales tax and.
So what is that one oh nine you were talking, going down to what?
That one oh nine can be completely absorbed by the vehicle and equipment reserve.
That would just be the addition on the revenue side of the transfer carbon reserves, right?
Yeah.
So.
Yep.
I like it.
And while we're talking about it, I observed, I don't know why it took me a year and a half, but. At the, the last few accounts in the revenue section, the A ninety-nines. Transfers to reserves are not revenues, they're expenditures.
Transfer from, right?
Yes, so, so I need to correct that. That was set up wrong. Anyway.
Very good.
Yeah, thank you.
Think Heather set that up, don't I? I'm joking. See, Josie's pointing to you.
For all the other ones.
That's a magnificent.
Yeah.
She can't defend herself.
Oh, Jacob, um, or probably before, but if you could speak a little bit to, um, the resale value and how.
Seven years, but still.
Um, works out to basically no cost.
Oh, yeah, the resale value on the, on the vehicles.
Huge, yeah.
Good to remind, um, part of that reputation policy, we're looking for. Where the pickup truck has a three-year habit for three, and, and then traded, and obviously, this first. That's makeups, this first go around here. Um, but even then, I'm looking at, you know, resale value and auction value for vehicles that are comparable to what we have. You know, I did, you know, like, for looking, um. We're still getting, you know, even at the age that they are now, about two thousand miles, and we'll be paid for them. Um, so ultimately, if you use a vehicle for four years for two thousand dollars, that's really managing costs fairly well. So once we, we've already done the hard part, the initial purchase, um, and then once that, it's, now, now it's just basically replacement cost, so. Um, you know, hopefully, you know, obviously, we want to know why they, why they have the most, they're usually generally a little miles, um, here, but.
And well taken care of.
Yeah, yeah, and there's really, it's, for three years, not much to do, you know, that's, it's just a lot of changes and. But that's all. And that's, again, that's, the three years is the small, the pickup trucks, flatbeds, where even for, you know, about eight years, on the dump trucks. Um, you know, and then other, other, we've got the whole, the whole vehicle where they, and, uh.
Your signs can post, uh, twelve, one twelve, four twenty. Yeah, four six, that's right. Got to bump to eight thousand dollars in mass expenditures for three years previous, which is forty-four hundred, so.
Which one is that, Daryl?
Four twenty-six.
Four twenty-six, five.
Oh, fifty-six, fifty?
Four one twelve, two one twelve.
Uh, yeah, that's, that's, um, one of those lines where we always have good intentions, and it doesn't seem to, uh. We've been pretty busy. This year, we're not planning on a whole street of gutters. Um, and we're trying to consolidate down and trying to do more D I repairs this year, a few, just mill and paves. And a lot, you know, some micro paving and things like that, so hopefully, you know, we've always planned on replacing the signs. As you can see in there, we haven't spent it this year, I think we spent nine hundred and seventy-one dollars or so.
Yep.
So, you know, not that you, we're going to, hey, this is just going to be transferred, or we can roll it into this year. But that unex, unexpended funds are going to go into the fund balance, you know, obviously, offset by whatever the revenues are. But anyway, we didn't spend it going into the fund balance. Um, presumably, we're going to, we've always seen it work out pretty well, or we spent less than we bring in, so. Yeah, hopefully, this year, it's going to be even, even more so with the, with the COVID and the stuff that we're doing. Um, so we're just trying to put it back in, have it back in the account, so hopefully, we can get to it this year and, and start changing more of those signs that we've intended to, but. That's kind of crazy.
Okay, so Jake, in your estimation, we have to cut seventy-two thousand dollars.
Thirteen point five one hundred line is where it's always.
Well, yeah.
Okay, Mike?
Yeah.
You can.
I would practice on that for a long time. And I did have talk with the agency, couldn't be asking anything. Um, you know, there's, there's certainly, you know, major road repairs, um, I think one of the things we've got in there is, um. Actually, I think I've got a mess there, a note into you that has about snow removal equipment, fifty-one, forty-two, two hundred lines. That's got, we've got a, a few things, I think it was thirty-one thousand, two hundred or three hundred that we had to do.
Yep.
Um, and then we've got some, you know, some wish list items in there. Um, and so that's, that's about worth thirty grand, we might be able to twenty-five or thirty grand from there.
Okay.
Um, if, if we had that, if we had to, um. I'm still optimistic that we'll find other areas, but, uh, you know, if we had to, there's, there's part of it there.
Right.
Um, obviously, with the, you know, there's, uh, I didn't, I don't think I printed out my entire vet road work tab, but, uh, when you're looking at what the. It's about fifteen grand to the South Lotto, the Indian Museum, um, that lot's not in wonderful state, but it's, uh. And we can't afford a dish here thing, and we can't afford a fish here thing.
Okay.
You know, that's, that's another area.
That's under major road repairs, right?
Yeah, that's, that's real within major road repairs, we have the Wood Street Circle. Um, this, that, the Wood Street Circle has got a, uh, I think it's a basic geometry problem, um. It drives up, it's just beat up, and the buses and the garbage trucks drive over the lawn, that's the gutters, it's just, it's, it's not shaped right. Um, it's a weird, odd angle and circle, and, uh, you know, I think they're trying, but they just. And when we're talking about, you know, fixing the building, it's kind of a problem for a while, fixing the gutters in there. We also have two with the Park Circle in here, that's, it's a hundred and nine thousand dollars, those, um, should be in the major road repairs. That's based on the engineer's estimate, uh, which I think they're usually pretty conservative. Um, and I think, one of the things, you know, we got that at the end of January, I believe it was, or beginning of February, um, the engineer's estimate, so I haven't had time to. Right now, the county's going out for bid on all their heavy area highways and stuff every year. We very typically will work off of the county highway, I mean, they, last week, I think, is when. Usually, it's coming around the twenty-second, the end of, end of February. I might be able to get those numbers now and look at it and see, it's often, they've got a hundred and nine thousand dollars to give over the Park Circle. Um, typically, engineers have a hundred and nine thousand dollars, I think we might be able to get for sixty thousand dollars, you know? Um, and see, there's, you know, we can, also, we get somebody else to do, you know, mill and paves here. Really, the, the, the technical stuff that's going to have to be done in that circle is, is the insulation and infirming, um. In the center, that's a model curb, and the rest of it, we're going to do, basically, signs and, and striping. You know, we got mill and pave, we're going to use a baseboard, I think, and it's the, it's a model curb in the center, and a raised island, and then figuring out the treatment for that. You know, we're talking about exposed, I get like the islands, I should fix it. On, on North Avenue there, but that's, that's not cheap. Um, it's a, it's a quicker investment, but it's, it's a one and done investment, we don't have to go on our mow it every week. Um, we don't have to do a lot of stuff to it, um, that you would if you did something else there. But I've also talked to, uh, in fact, uh, one of the homeowners association down there, and it's trying to set up, I think the, the gentleman I was talking to is coming back, um. A few more weeks in Florida, and trying to set up a meeting, I told him we have the plan, and had some stuff, and we're trying to, I'm trying to work cooperatively with the. Homers Association and the apartment complexes down there, that's, it's the entrance to their area. So if we can say, hey, we're, we're going to give you a blank slate, you guys maintain it, what do you want here?
Yeah.
If we do an agreement with them, we don't have to worry about maintaining it, they can mow it, plant flowers. Put, you know, we put regular concrete, and they could put planters on tops, and then we have rent for snow, there's.
That's it, that's it.
Endless, endless, uh, options there, um, and I think we can do that for less, too, so. I guess that's, that's the short answer here, we can do that for less. I had coffee, I warned everybody.
I should add also, um, uh, sixteen twenty-two hundred buildings and build tall equipment. Um, we're currently at sixty thousand for the roof, which has to happen this year. Um, but we need to add in, Heather is looking at quotes for the work that needs to be done to the sound system. Do you, do you have any information?
I don't think, I don't think that would be that critical.
Not the microphones.
No?
We have to fix, this needs its own break.
Yeah, and, yeah.
And, um, you've all, I've asked me a bunch of times this year, when am I going to fix it, when am I going to get it fixed?
Need its own breaker? Oh, that's, 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 that's.
Yeah, no.
Coming on a Saturday around some wires, don't worry about it.
That scares me, that scares me.
I'm not.
I really recommend for it, going on.
And then there's this one other piece they said would help the sound on Facebook. And so just a big project that we can spread out over a couple of years at, at some point, it'd be good to have a camera up there, and that's, you know, in years to come. That, so all I have to do is click a button and change where, you know.
It would be, yes.
So, just to make.
Sound system doesn't matter if the roof collapses, so. I think one of the priorities. I think the roof will be a priority.
First things first is to get that fixed.
Yeah, that shouldn't be on. Camera, parents.
We've been saying that for some time.
Hey, I, I, you've asked me to do it, I got, I'm working on it.
Hey, we gotta make.
And we do have to stop.
Choices here, do you want braces, or do you want a breaker?
And on that note, we have to stop.
Get that breaker, was that important, wasn't you?
Okay, no breaker.
No breaker.
Okay, so if you guys have comments or questions between now and the next meeting, feel free, all the emails, and. And I guess, Jake, you and I, or we, and look where else it would make sense to make whatever other cuts we need to get down to our revenue goal.
Yeah, yeah, that's, uh.
And then we need to vote, to go into revenue sections.
Yes, we do, but I ask one question, what's in that fifty-four ten, two hundred? I don't know. This equipment in capital operating at a hundred and sixty-one thousand.
Fifty-four ten? Sidewalk, isn't it?
Yeah.
Uh, then go, no, two hundred, fifty-four ten, two hundred.
Yeah, sidewalk, okay.
What's in the capital operating?
Yeah.
Oh, that's, okay, it's not equipment, yeah, that's, that's where we have the, um. South Avenue, um, Wood Street, and Corning Park sidewalks. That was our request from Community Development, oh, that's, that's our budget for the Community Development block grants, the middle that we did, and our request is offset on the other side, it should be a hundred and.
Right, you can't mess with that.
Ninety-seven seven, I think it was.
Right, right, yeah.
And come back.
Is that what it is? Now, that's, you know, again, those are estimates, you know, that are kind of, you know, we were budgeting for those things, we don't want to get caught, you know, want to be surprised, we've kind of figured work case scenarios. Um, you know, that we're going to have to remove, you know, fifty-seven trees that are out there. Maybe we look at it and decide that it's not, it's dangerous, we remove all the trees, so we simply get an easement, hopefully, we make a side or a few percent of the sidewalks back, and. And we don't have eighteen thousand.
And we know here.
Yeah, for removal and replacement costs.
Yeah.
But I, I don't want to, not at all for those when I'm putting in a request, because I want to, I don't want to.
Nobody else.
I don't want to be short, you know, at, uh, at the end of the day.
Did somebody take his coffee? Somebody take his coffee? Somebody take his coffee?
Thirteen twenty-five four oh six? Yeah, that is pretty high, isn't it?
How are we combining, Marsha?
Twenty-eight?
Thank you, Marsha.
How are we combining? Oh, yes, thank you, Joe.
What issue?
What?
General expenditures, we just, for thirteen twenty-five four oh six. Um, Joe and I made an executive decision to combine our two computer accounts into one. So that's why the total looks different. That includes all our harbors and permit, all that stuff.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Joe, I forgot anything. Can I finish?
Thank you very much, Marsha.
Can we run some passport specials to get more revenue, like buy one, get one free, or?
Yeah, yeah.
Don't really, that is, it's going to go so.
Yeah.
A lot.
Wouldn't it?
Oh, my God.
It's common. They did say that they were going to release soon some new guidelines for people that are double vaccinated, I heard that last night on the news.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm, because I got my second.
Me too.
Finally, I got my first.
Yeah, my phone.
You too. And it's been two weeks.
But I did the Pfizer one, and the second, um, you didn't, it was fine?
I mean, it wasn't bad, but I deserve about an hour.
Yeah, exactly, the doctors that I guess, I won't take too many.
Uh, just sleepy, it's been six.
And it gets one.
Nothing from the bridge, except for.
I got one first one, I tried it. I'm super sore, I think.
Been two weeks, I guess, it's like, it's like. Been two weeks, I guess, it's a little insane. But I guess I slept, I mean, I slept for five. All right, Charlie, go ahead, get us into executive session, sir.
Thank you, Marsha.
Next time, next time I'll ask you to take me there. Okay.
Thank you, Marsha. Heather, you too. Still say.
Thank you very much.
You too.
Thank you very much, Marsha.
I understand, thank you. You were laughing. Thank you, Marsha.
Joe? Okay, at this particular point, I will ask for a motion to move into executive session to discuss the possible employment of a particular person or the position of building inspector public works assistant.
I'll make that motion.
Can you amend the motion to adjourn immediately after the executive session?
Uh, yes, I can. And, um, after we discuss the possible employment of a particular person for the position of building inspector public works assistant, we will immediately adjourn. As we have no further business tonight, thank you.
Thank you.
And we have a motion coming to many.
I missed the second though, because somebody, I missed the second, I apologize.
Uh, yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, trustee Lauer.
Aye.
Trustee Bellamy. Trustee Almoito. Trustee Lancey.
Aye.
Mayor Byers.
Aye.
Motion passed.